Action items. 9.1, discuss and take action to approve requests to submit grant application to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to establish a managed assigned counsel or MAC office. I believe, Judge Henderson?
Thank you, Judge. May you please, the court? I live over in West Sherman.
Good. Happy you were able to make it over here across the...
Thank you. And it seems like, you know, forever, when I drive into work, I have to maneuver around all the construction. And I know y'all deal with this all the time, but sometimes I think about all of the planning that went into that, all the thought that went into that decades ago. And so what I'm really here to talk to you about is something that kind of goes along with that growth, and that is the need for us to address some issues pertaining to indigent defense. What I'm here to request is that the Commissioners' Court approve the submission of a grant application to the Texas Association or the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to establish a managed assigned counsel or MAC office. This is an office that will take charge of providing legal representation for persons the courts find to be indigent. A MAC office would operate under a written agreement with the county, or eventually perhaps additional counties for the purpose of appointing counsel to represent indigent defendants. I want to give you a little bit of the background that kind of led to me being here today. Really, the original idea for this grew out of work that we were doing through the mental health diversion program. And some of you may remember, you were on the court in 2021, when our county was able to obtain a grant from the Judicial Commission on Mental Health to begin a mental health diversion program. And we hired Elizabeth Groves to kind of work with that program. And so through efforts that we were making to address mental health diversion, we had a lot of things going on. And one of the things we did, a group of us went out to Lubbock. Lubbock was kind of held up as the, what they call the gold standard of counties to address mental health needs. And so we went out there to try to educate ourselves on how to do things better. And one of the things that we did was attend a court hearing with one of the judges, Judge Hawker, who operated their mental health court. We went to lunch with them, and one of the things that I was really impressed with was how educated and prepared the defense attorneys were. And so I asked him about that, and he described how in Lubbock County, they have what they called a private defender's office, who basically oversees all of the indigent defense in Lubbock County. It actually started out as a mental health private defender's office, and it worked so well that it kind of evolved into an office that handles all of the indigent defense. And so that kind of grasped my interest, and I began having conversations with people here in Grayson County. I had a number of private conversations with people who would come through my office out in the community. When I would go to bar meetings, I had private conversations with people, basically to say, what do you think about this idea? Is this something that would help us? And as I talked to people, you know, my interest really was ways to improve mental health diversion. But as I talked to people, you know, I just kind of started hearing all of these different concerns about our indigent defense operation. And there just seemed to be, I would say, kind of just general discontent with it, you know? Like, some people would have this problem, some people had this problem, the district judges had different problems than we have in the county courts at law. But that kind of led me to believe that this is a problem that we needed to address. And so as judges like me are sometimes asked to do, I gave presentations at a variety of different things and kind of floated this idea at those more formal presentations. We talked about it kind of generally at a Grayson County Bar Association panel discussion last spring, talked to some lawyers about it. It was mentioned at the sequential intercept mapping workshop that I think many of y'all attended last June, and it was actually identified as a recommendation by that group to look into establishing some sort of managed counsel office. We talked about it at a presentation at the Texas Behavioral Health Leadership Team Conference to some degree last fall. Also, we have spent a year or so kind of touching base with people outside of Grayson County, people in other counties who have MAC offices, lawyers who work for MAC offices, judges where MAC offices are in operation. We've had a number of fairly detailed conversations with people who are at the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, which is a state agency that oversees indigent defense throughout the state. So we've really done a lot of work. And then we, you know, kind of identified May as a target date because May, the first week in May, is the date that grant applications are due. So kind of working within that kind of timeline, I felt like we needed to have really a more kind of formal discussion and presentation to a more formal group to kind of get us to the point where we would be able to intelligently present this information to y'all to make a decision. And so we convened an exploratory meeting where I asked a number of people to attend to kind of talk about whether this was a suitable way to proceed with this. Following the exploratory meeting, we had a steering committee meeting, and then, which included a number of additional people. And then we, after that, had a little, what I call a grant writing work group, where we actually have prepared and presented to y'all in your agenda packet, the grant application that we're proposing to submit, and the grant application that, you know, has a number of markers in it to determine whether it's effective and that sort of thing. Now, the, all of the people that worked on it probably had about, I'm going to say around 20 people involved in these conversations. Some of them are here today, some of them haven't been able to make it. The judges are working across the street, have a busy docket. I've got a courtroom waiting for me, but, so not all of them could attend. But I would like for everyone who was on the steering committee to kind of raise your hand, just so the judges will let you know. So we have a lot of folks that have looked into this that we feel like has quite a bit of experience in this area. So this is kind of the idea. The project that we're looking at is modeled on several different managed assigned counsel offices, which have been developed in other counties. It is a fairly new idea, but there has been a lot of research done on how and why it works. In particular, we've looked very closely at the Lubbock MAC, which operates as a nonprofit entity, which contracts with Lubbock County to provide indigent defense. We've also been working with an attorney named Elise Ferguson, who's on our steering committee. I don't think she's here today. But she was basically in charge of the Collin County Managed Assigned Counsel Office. And Collin County, they just do mental health, but she was involved in working with that. There are a number of advantages that have been identified in a lot of the research that has been done with offices of this type. One of the things that we asked the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to prepare for us is a planning study. And so they looked at our county and gave, produced a study that kind of gave us some recommendations. Now, our grant application, as you know, is not quite as robust as what they presented, but they're, you know, they did present a planning study that I think was very helpful. And they identified these advantages. They indicate that a MAC can improve the quality, accountability, transparency, and efficiency of assigned counsel systems. It does this by enhancing support services, like mental health case managers, administrative support, investigators, and immigration consultations. It provides training, mentorship, caseload controls, and oversight of assigned counsel performance. It's helpful in recruiting attorneys to represent indigent clients. It helps assign and pay attorneys, investigators, and experts, responds to complaints about assigned counsel performance, and provides data collection, reporting, and analysis. There's some other material that the TIDC has published that also describes a number of benefits of managed assigned counsel programs: accountability, quality, cost effectiveness. And they identify some cost effectiveness improvements as reducing the jail population, increasing efficiency, decreased administrative costs, and budget predictability. They also talk a lot about the independence of this type of a program. Now, that's their take on the advantages. These are some of the advantages that I see. I'm not a big government guy, never have been. And this is a way to improve indigent defense that really does not grow government. It'll be a private office that would contract with the county. The county's line item would be for contract services; it would not be for employees. So we would not be adding headcount with this type of a, with this type of an operation. I see this, in my vision, as potentially providing a regional solution to providing indigent defense. So we want to start this out in Grayson County, but I really think that your court has the opportunity to pursue a path that eventually can provide indigent defense to other counties who are similarly situated as Grayson County. You know, if anybody who goes down to Austin and is involved in discussions of state issues, it's hard not to miss the fact that when we go down there, as representatives of a county like ours, the people, the people who are from the larger urban counties, they don't really get it, you know? They don't always get what we have to deal with. And so I think what my idea is, is if we can start this type of a program in Grayson County, prove that it's effective, prove that it's a benefit to our taxpayers and the people who utilize the criminal justice system, we potentially can provide solutions to other similarly situated counties: Cook County, Fannin County, Lamar County, Red River County. To eventually, you know, provide something that is a long-term solution, or a long-term plan to provide these sorts of services in a smart, measured way, well into the future. And so that's kind of what I like to see, you know, something that we can build. And, you know, people talk about how Lubbock is the, you know, they're the leader, they're the gold standard. It's like, I want us to be the gold standard, you know? I want us to be the leader, and I want us to try to hopefully implement something that can be, you know, a benefit for our generation and possibly generations to come. We really are in a very good position, time-wise, to present this. Many of you may know an attorney named John Hunter Smith. He is the president-elect of the Texas Criminal Defense Lawyers Association. And I think, you know, and he came up as a court-appointed attorney in our system. And so I think we can hopefully draw upon his group to assist us in kind of understanding and building this office. Also, our state representative, Reggie Smith, who is another person who, as an attorney, was on our court-appointed attorney wheel. His assignments in the state legislature have given him some insight into how Austin supports projects like this. And he's actually on the board of the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. So that kind of gives us a little bit of insight into the support that they have for that. This is not an easy problem to solve, obviously. I mean, I've sent y'all many pages of material that describes the problem, but it will never be easier to solve than it is now. And it's not, it's not, you know, inexpensive, but it will never be less expensive than it is now. And so this is a proposal that we have for you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, and I know others here might be willing to answer questions, too. But if you don't have anything else, I'll be taking my seat.
Yeah, you sent us a lot of information. Can you tell me about the problems with what we're doing now, the wheel system, and why is that not sustainable?
Well, I wish I brought all the material with me. I think, as I said, I don't think it's just, I don't think it's just one problem. I think the people that you, who are involved in it, they all have different perspectives on what they see the problem with it is. I think on the misdemeanor side, I think what the issue is, is educating and organizing lawyers to address mental health issues. That's what I see our problem to be. I think down on the district court end, the problem is more in having a group of attorneys available to take all of the court appointments that need to be taken. That's just a couple of the issues, but there are a lot of them. And, you know, that's what I would say.
The availability, and, believe me, y'all are way more involved in this than I am, you know, I'm just a numbers guy, has seemed to, the feedback I've gotten has been more how much we're paying for those, and there's lawyers who just, they don't mess with it because of what we're paying. Is that why we have a shortage of people willing to do indigent defense?
I don't think that's the only reason, no.
I was just leading from, you know, that, if, okay, here the ask is us to spend $700,000 a year.
Well, that's not the number we're asking for.
Well, not with grant. That's what the, your study says it's going to cost for the...
No, no. That's the plan, that's the planning study.
Right.
That's the planning study. We're not asking for everything that they've authorized in the planning study.
Okay.
The grant application is quite a bit lower than that.
I've opened the wrong item then, so what is...
I'm not going to ask you to spend $750,000 at all.
If we're going to spend $700,000, why don't we just pay the lawyers more, rather than have that as an administrative cost?
Yeah, yeah.
So what is the administrative cost that you're...
Well...
What's the budgetary impact if we, without the grant? You know, obviously, the grant would pay a declining balance in there, but what would be the budget impact of establishing this office? And...
So what the proposal, or the study that Texas Indigent Defense Council recommended was two executives and three administrative support people. And that's where that $750,000 figure comes from, that's the cost of that. So what we did in working through what that proposal said was, really, we don't need that much to start out with. So what we're, what our budget, or what this budget is based on, is one administrator who would combine the roles of the executive director and the chief defendant, and then one support person. And like I said, I don't have the numbers right in front of me now, but I think when we looked at them yesterday, it was around, somebody may be able to help me...
It cost us, the first year on an 80% grant pay, us paying 20 would be a little under $100,000.
It would be, it would be under $100,000 the first year. Now, it would be under $100,000 the first year.
Annual cost at about $425,000, with the first-year startup of almost $50,000.
And...
That would go away. But then it's a declining 80, 60, 40, am I correct?
It's typically the way that the Indigent Defense Commission awards grants is on an 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%, and then the fifth year, you own it. Now, one of the things about this type of presentation is, if this organization is set up as a nonprofit, they would have the ability to access other sorts of funding. They would have the ability to talk to other counties, who, if they join us, would amend, put us in a position to amend and expand the grant. And so the first year, Grayson County has it. If the operation expands the way that I think it has the ability to, we could get additional grant funding and amend the grant. There would be more counties participating in it, and there would be more grant money available to it. It would also give us the opportunity to have grant funding from other sources besides the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Now, one of, one of the things that I think we always are afraid of is, is this thing going to work? Is it going to work? Now, it's worked in, it's worked in other places, but I don't think there's any guarantees about these things.
So are there measurables in here that say, okay, has, you know, what's it doing? And how's, how do we, you know, how do we judge if it worked or it didn't work?
It is, there are absolutely measurables in there, and if you look at the grant application itself...
I found the numbers, $260,000 for the first year.
If you look at the grant application itself, it has detailed measurables in there about how it's working. And, you know, like, okay, we borrowed this, we borrowed these measurables from Lubbock County, but there are, there's a long list of measurables in there in the grant application itself. You know, and if it does not perform the way that we want it to perform...
That's, that's really what most of, most of these things come down to, is, you know, it's easy to go in and accept the grant money at the beginning...
Yes, yes.
...to get something started, but then how do you ever determine if it's something you should continue doing? Did it work? Is it worth the additional funding that we put into it?
Yeah.
Within here, okay, we're going to have $250,000, $300,000, whatever, that's going to go into administrating a program...
Right.
...that doesn't necessarily address the problem with the, having the attorneys to do the work. You know, if we're not going to pay the attorneys more money, then they still don't want to do the work. And, you know, nobody really wants to spend a lot more money on indigent anything, but that pesky constitution, you know, gets us where we have to, have to do those things.
Yeah.
So it's really, you know, what's the, you know, I'm...
Well, it is primarily...
I'm not trying to be negative to this. I'm, I'm, I'm just, you know, these are just the normal challenges for...
Yeah.
...when you want more money...
Yeah.
...is how does, how do we, how do we measure that in the future?
Well, I would just, you know, recommend that if you, if you look at the grant application, it does have a number of measurables in there, a long list of measurables about whether it's performing the way that it should. You know, and like I say, I don't think there are ever any guarantees. I rely on the research that's been done that demonstrates that these sorts of offices are effective, they do, they are cost-effective, and they're, they're important for a lot of reasons, other than just, you know, I think we would have the ability to recruit more attorneys here to take these cases. And I don't think we have time for me to go into all of the reasons to do that this morning, but I think that's a big component of it, you know? The lawyers that I, that I have talked to, who've worked for managed assigned counsel programs, what's important to me is, like, they say this, you know, like, this is an ability for us to learn how to do our job better as young attorneys. And so, you know, the way we do it now, we work off a wheel. For the most part, each of the lawyers on the wheel are kind of on their, in their own office, on their own. And this provides a very specific way to mentor young lawyers, to monitor the performance of young lawyers, and to make the legal system better from the defense point of view. And that has a benefit. Now, and I can't really say, you know, exactly how it works, but, but if, if the lawyers are better educated, and I think any judge will tell you this, if they're better prepared, if they come to court understanding their case and understanding how to advocate for their side of the case, whether it's the state or the defense, that improves our system of justice. And that does come down to money, you know, at some point, because the more smoothly the system operates, the more efficient it is. There are tons of places in the criminal justice system where waste occurs, and this is a way to address that, so.
So this would be a managed, a managed office. I'm assuming billing and everything would come out of that for the attorneys to make everything more efficient, plus the training? The, the training of the attorneys, being able to operate more efficiently, and therefore be able to try more cases, move the, move the dockets along a little better?
Exactly.
And then, I'm assuming, I know there's been instances where we've had, a district judge has had to pay two attorneys, one to mentor, a younger attorney, so that they could get the experience to hopefully eventually be able to try the stuff on their own, so that we could cut the cost of that sum. And then something you mentioned about extending the grants, I guess by extending it out to other counties, it would restart the clock as far as the grant process, because now they're, they've applied for the grant as part of our MAC. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I think, I think, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the fact that if you look at the numbers that exist on MAC offices throughout the state, there are one county max that serve counties that are more populated than ours. And so they have some economies of scale there. Like, we have five courts, and a lot of these other counties, they serve many more courts than that. Now, obviously, the number, the, if you increase the number of courts, then you can take advantage some, take advantage of some economies of scale. And so that's one of the reasons why it would be important to try to broaden it.
But if you broaden it, then, because, you know, at the end of the day, we're, we're funding it, except for some grant money. So at the end of the day, if you broaden it, and you bring in, say, Cook and Fannin, for example, I mean, how does that funding mechanism work? I mean, do we, a percent comes from Grayson County, a percent comes from them? I mean, would that be very complicated?
It would be complicated, but the way that it would work is, the way that I'm proposing this, there would be a separate office established, which would be a nonprofit, that would have its own board of directors. Each county would have an oversight board, which, which is required by statute. You know, this is an office that's defined by statute. And the oversight board would provide advice and counsel to the Commissioners' Court on whether this is a good deal or not, right? And so the office would contract with Grayson County. The office could contract with another county, or a third county, or a fourth county. And the more people who are involved, the more counties are, which are there to spread the expense of the administrative cost. And so that's how that, that could be, you know, arranged. And that's, that's kind of the thought that I have. The population of our county is such that we are not an urban county, because we're not big enough to be one, but we're not considered a rural county, because we're too large to be a rural county. And the Texas Indigent Defense Commission has different grant rules for how big you are. If we were able to include a county that is a rural county, we would be able to access, or the office would be able to access greater funding than 80%.
What do, what do we spend on indigent defense now?
That would be a million, isn't it?
We are...
Approximately a million.
Approximately a million.
A year.
And then what, what you're asking for is the grant would pay the administrative cost to, well, part of it, 80% of the, of the cost to fund the MAC, which would, we would still have the, the money coming out for indigent defense on top of that, correct?
The indigent defense cost would still be paid by the county, with a few exceptions. There is, there are line items in this grant that kind of duplicate what is already in our budget: investigators, expert witnesses, those sorts of things. In visiting with Suzette, there's a line item for financial services. And I think the, the MAC could, under that line item, pay our county for some sort of financial services. But I think you're right. I mean, the majority, the majority of the budget that we have is still going to be as it is. This is a, just to be clear, this is a new expense to the county, a contract expense, but it is in addition to the million dollars or so that we pay every year, you know? There, there will be some budget predictability that I think will come from this office that we perhaps don't have now, but that's a, that's a, that's an advantage that I think would exist from it.
What's the deadline for the, the grant submission?
It's, it's the first week in May. I think it's the eighth or ninth. I think it's the eighth or ninth.
Right now, we, we can approve the bu- the grant submission, but we can't actually approve the budgetary impact, uh, of if, if it's successful or not, whether we'd be able to accept it, because we'd have to, we can't do that until budgeted.
True. Derek, can, do you mind if I just comment on that? So I, I, I want to make sure that, that we do understand, like, what the request is today. And the request today is just to submit the application. Um, it would still have to be approved by the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. If it's not approved, it, you know, we can't really go any further than that. Um, if it is approved, there would still need to be a process to, um, start an office and then come back before the commissioner's court to say, this is, this is, you know, the deal on this.
Right.
And, uh.
So submissions in May, when do you expect to hear, uh, whether it's approved?
Their, their board meeting is in June, and so in June.
So before July, you would.
Yes.
You would know.
I, I don't think there's any question.
I mean, because that's, that's where our critical timeframe is from a budgetary standpoint.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Under the, uh, under the stipulations or the situation that Jeff outlined, that, if this grant is applied for, if that is a successful application, we have an opportunity at that point through Suzette, we can see if we can fund this adequately and, uh, move from there. I don't have a problem with applying for the grant. That does not mean we've made the budgetary shifts and have the money there to cooperate with the grant. Is that possible?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we apply for the grant.
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Arthur, second by Commissioner James. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.